Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the December tenth, two thousand and nineteen, City Council Meeting. The first order of business would be the roll call. Ali?
Bartlet.
Here.
Borsma.
Here.
Caravello.
Here.
Doom.
Here.
Hailey.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Mieske.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
And Legaki is absent for the time being.
I'm here to, um...
Did I miss you?
Yeah.
Sorry. Schumacher.
Here.
All right.
Don't forget me.
It's the sweater.
I recorded that you were here, but I didn't say it.
All right, thank you. And I'd like to welcome the students that are here in attendance tonight. Feel free to come up and speak if you'd like in their public comment. We do have a couple of communications. The first communication is coming from the clerk's office regarding our next meeting.
There will be, there will not be a second meeting in December as it falls on Christmas Eve.
Unless somebody would like to meet on Christmas Eve.
Don't you want to see what sweater I would have on Christmas Eve?
Send me a picture, will you?
Send us a picture.
Look it up on Facebook. I've got it on Facebook.
We'll do that.
You're wearing all fifty, right?
That would be hilarious.
That would be good. Are there any communications from council members this evening?
Um, yes. Sorry. Got here just in time. Wanted to thank all of the Alders who helped with the listening sessions, and especially all of the constituents who attended. It just was very helpful. And just to have all of that listened and processed, I'm hoping has brought a sense of more transparency and moving forward to Stoughton. So I just wanted to mention that and express special thanks.
Thank you. Any other communications from Alders? We do have a presentation tonight from our senior center director. Sidney McGlynn is here, and we're here to celebrate.
We are.
So for those of you who are not familiar with our accreditation processes, the Senior Center has been state accredited for twenty years, and that was our latest accomplishment there. And for national accreditation, we've been accredited for fifteen years. Each of them are five-year increments, so we only have to do that every five years. It's a very time-intensive but very important process that we do. Want to recognize Roz Gausman. She is a member of our Commission on Aging, representing the town of Dunn, but also sat on our last National Accreditation Committee. So appreciate her being here and her time. With our accreditation committees, we try to get a wide variety of folks, not just staff, but people from our Commission on Aging, city council members. I know Sid has served on our accreditation committee before, and we try to get more people who are going to be asking questions because the whole idea of the accreditation is to make sure that we are keeping up with our population. We certainly could not be doing Senior Center activities and programming and services for, for instance, twenty years ago. Things have changed. Our participants have changed their situations, and things that some of our staff are dealing with are much different in within those twenty years. We want to make sure that we have people asking our questions, "Well, why do you do it that way?" Or "Have you ever thought about collaborating with someone?" And those are the important questions that we want our accreditation to bring about. We then, before we go into our accreditation process, we do long-range planning. We look at five, ten years. What are some of the needs that we might have? What are some of the needs that we have now that maybe we didn't have five years ago, and how are we addressing those? So we include participants and volunteers into that as well. So we have people who are familiar with the Senior Center and maybe someone who's never been there. So those are important points of view to make sure that we are hearing and addressing when we're talking about looking at services current and into the future. So just to give you a real quick overview, so the accreditation process looks at nine standards: governance, finance, HR, community collaborations, to really look at the area in which you serve and how are we best addressing older adult needs. Not only within our Senior Center, but how are we advocating for older adults in our community, to make sure that our business community is paying attention to older adult situations and needs that they have? How are our, you know, our regular community people and committees, are they including older adults? Which I think is really important. I think if you, many years ago, the city had put out a survey, and Rodney's probably the only one still who remembers this, there was a question of, is it, you know, all our city services, are they important? And one of the comments was, "Well, why do we have such a big Senior Center?" You know, we have a large population of older adults. We know that some of our most important activities that happen in our city are because older adults either started them, still volunteer for them, or are, you know, involved in them in some way. So it's important. And the city has a longstanding commitment to older adults and their families who are trying to take care of them. So I wanted to just bring these by and make sure that you know that we are trying to keep up with what we need to be paying attention to. We do not take lightly the commitment that the city has done for older adults, and the support that we get obviously just went through budget time. We do not take lightly the support that comes from this body to make sure that we can continue doing these kind of things and keeping these standards. So it was a thank you to you, but also to let you know the hard work that our staff and our volunteers do on behalf of those monies that you support us with. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Sid?
I just have a comment. I am a current council representative of Commission on Aging, which, and that's since it kind of oversees our Senior Center locally. We have one of the best in the area, I believe, and I'm proud of the amount of services that we provide, not only in just outreach to seniors and services provided by our excellent staff, but also, this is a place that seniors can get together, and they can socialize, and they can have special programs geared to them. I think we do, I think that, I think we do our seniors a great service by having such an excellent Senior Center and also the leadership that accompanies that Senior Center. I appreciate all the services that you provide, Sidney.
Thank you. Questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The minutes and reports are in the packet. Item number three is public comment period. There's an opportunity to speak to the taxi service, disbanded hours, or anything else that might be on anybody's mind this evening. Nobody signed up to speak, but if anybody would like to come and address the council, now would be the time to do it. And standing on, we'll move to our consent agenda. The consent agenda has three items on it. The consent agenda is usually just a quick way to vote on multiple items that are routine items that really typically don't have much deliberation on. So there's three items in there. There's city council minutes. There's operator license for bartenders in our establishments, and also a resolution appointing election inspectors for next year's elections. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Jensen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Hirsch. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately?
I have an edit to the minutes of November twenty-sixth.
Okay.
The edit in old business underneath the Kettle Park vote, there was a sentence that said, in an overview of the listening sessions, that we, Legaki added that few attendees expressed concerns. And actually, if we, if we could change that to something that's more neutral by saying, "Well, eighteen constituents attended, expressing their thoughts and some, expressing their questions and some of their thoughts." Probably is better representing rather than an overview that was in the notes.
Okay. So we'll include that into the minutes then. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed. That carries. We have old business tonight. The first item is ordinance twenty-five of two thousand and nineteen, a second reading, so we looked at this at the last meeting, and we're here tonight to possibly take action. And this comes from Public Safety. Alder Person Schumacher, would you like to introduce this? I will. Oh, Public Safety.
I've got most of the rest.
He's got plenty to do.
He's got everything else. Alder Person Jensen, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance twenty-five, two thousand and nineteen, amending chapter fifty-six subsection B. The city has Stoughton Municipal Code by adding Nordic Ridge Park to the list of parks where alcohol is allowed by permit, and I would move for approval.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Hirsch. Any questions or comments? Alder Person Borsma?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have absolutely nothing against Nordic Ridge Park, but I remain concerned about alcohol. Beverage is consumed in the presence of kids. I don't think it's good to pour it out for kids, for young people. If I had the opportunity to vote on all the parks, I would, but I don't at this point. But I don't, I just don't think it's in good form, so I will be voting against this.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One opposed. That carries. Item number six is ordinance twenty-six of two thousand and nineteen, second reading. This one comes from Planning Commission. This would be Alder Person Caravello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is O. twenty-six, two thousand and nineteen, ordinance providing for the direct annexation of a portion of the town of Dunn to the city of Stoughton, Dane County, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Hailey. Alder Person Caravello, did you want to start on this and then?
This is a request by Dvorak Investments to, who is the owner of the property, to have the property annexed into the city of Stoughton so they can proceed with looking at developing that property.
Okay, thank you. Anything you'd like to add, Director Scheel, or?
What contains in your packet is the material related to this annexation request. The developer has communicated to us that he's certainly interested in looking at a holistic development plan for this area, including stormwater management and how utilities would be served here in the future. It's not imminent for development at this point, and we understand from him that it's planned to remain agricultural until such time that it would be ready for development. But he feels it's important to have it become part of the city and recognize the global approach to how stormwater management and utilities would be servicing this area.
Alder Person Borsma?
Yeah, I addressed this last time with the question when it came up with the first reading, and that was if there was an objection from, I believe, Dunn, Town of Dunn, for this annexation. And so I thought, I think I had that question answered, that there were some concerns by the Town of Dunn for this annexation. But the other, the other one is I would be interested in, I noticed that the vote is too against. If there would be any comments from those people voting against, as to why they voted against.
Who would like to go first?
I could go first. I was one of those against the annexation. I also had concerns regarding the letter from Dunn objecting to the annexation, referring to, one of the main things was referring to the, what is it? The Department of Administration's letter regarding a, what is it? An intergovernmental, a common boundary agreement, basically, between Stoughton and Dunn. And I guess I would say it's a recommendation or something that we could look at in that letter from the Department of Administration, since this parcel is on the, both communities' comprehensive plans have a, recommend creating like an intergovernmental agreement preserving farmland and promoting compact and orderly development and implementing joint planning to keep issues calm and outcomes predictable and mutually beneficial, is the wording from that document. And I just thought it would be beneficial for us to look at that before we go and proceed with the annexation of this parcel. Although I understand Mr. Dvorak's interest in looking forward for planning purposes for the future. But that was one of my concerns. I guess I was also concerned a little bit with the, that little sliver of property that is, you know, I was concerned initially that that was going to create an island, although it's not technically going to create an island of that piece of property right there, just off of fifty-one. But still seems a little odd in my mind.
Do you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, if I could, just to follow up with a question, and that is, so where does it stand, where do we stand in terms of that letter, the cooperation letter, whatever it was called?
Boundary agreement?
The agreement, yeah.
So we, we met with the Town of Dunn officials to talk to them about their letter and their concerns at the request of the Planning Commission. And really, as a result of that conversation, I think there's kind of a mutual understanding that we do want to eventually develop that in an orderly manner as, as feel laid out in the language in your packet, and that the expense to do a border agreement may not be worth the investment because once we get beyond Highway B, there's the horse farm there, and then after that, it's pretty much wetlands, which seems to be undevelopable anyway. So there's kind of a natural boundary there anyway. So the cost benefit, in order to draft the document, doesn't really feel like it's worth it. But certainly, we had a good conversation with the town officials. We have an understanding of what their thoughts, concerns, and philosophy is going forward, and we hope to be able to build on that conversation for these types of issues and other issues as they arrive. I thought it was a pretty positive meeting that we had. Hopefully, that answers your question. And then, I know, President Mieske was the other one that voted at the Planning Commission. Did you want to add your thoughts?
Sure. Yeah, there was a lot of concern regarding the border agreement, which there was none when this first came about. It laid dormant for quite a long time, and the city did nothing with it because they had nothing to really talk about because they had no requests in front of them. However, the city holds all the cards when it comes to this. So, yeah, the Town of Dunn understands what the city wants, and the city wants what it's going to get. That's basically what it comes down to. I'll be, I could be really politically correct and say nice things, but that's the truth of the matter, unfortunately. You know, we're, we're going to stop, as the mayor said, because we can't use the land past that, not because we have a mutual beneficial agreement that's going with it. So that's kind of a sour note for me. Also, the fact that this piece of property is, if you look at it, yeah, it's in our master plan, which frankly, I don't hold a lot of stock in because our master plan, I think, is rather arbitrary and capricious. That's just my own opinion. And it's out, like an island, out by itself. We have three hundred and some acres of land right now that's open and not developed. We're going to add another fifty acres, which is not going to be developed for, according to the person who's requesting the annexation for a number of years, from the way he's, they're talking. So is it prudent for us to accept it at this point in time? I think it's not ready yet.
Thank you. Alder Person Bartlet, did you have your hand?
Yeah, I did. I'm going to support this. I, I know some don't think the comp plan has a lot of meaning to it, but I know I was on the Planning Commission when we did the last one, and staff in the Planning Commission put countless hours in that thing. It's, a lot of work goes into the comp plan. So this was part of the comp plan. I wasn't expecting something for this area to come up so early, but it's in there, and I have no problem moving forward with it. This isn't a development at this time. He's just looking at the comprehensive, well, an overview plan of the whole area. Makes sense to plan the utilities and the storm drainage for that entire area at one time, and to try and coincide some of that work with the DOT projects that are expected in the next few years on Highway fifty-one. So I think it would coincide with some of that. Hopefully, we could definitely use it. The Dvoraks are a great developer in the city. They have done a lot of projects, put a lot of money in investments, and do a great job with it. And the ones I'm familiar with didn't ask for any tip until it had been done on the Dvorak's dime, so I definitely support it. I think it's been great. That state statement also said that this was found to be in the public interest. So if you're going to go by their statement, I would go by that. I don't have much interest in the boundary plan and tying the hands of the city council for the future because I, who knows what will be happening in ten, fifteen years. So I'm not for looking at a boundary plan at this time, and I am definitely in favor of this. We could use the development at some time. I have no telling how many years it'll be until something's out there, but we could use it for the schools and use it for the growth of the city. So I'm going to support it and hope others do as well.
Any other questions or comments? Alder Person Hirsch?
I guess I'm kind of on the fence on this one. I know it was part of the comprehensive plan, but I also look at the comprehensive plan and the survey that we sent all our citizens about growth in the city. And again, like I said last time, seventy-two percent of the people that responded to the survey did not want growth above ten percent in the next ten years. So that's twenty-twenty-seven. And with the Riverfront, Kettle Park West, and Nordic Ridge, we're, we're going to be at that ten percent or more. So to look at and to honor what our citizens want, I don't think they want this growth. Yes, they want to fill the schools, but I don't think they, the people that are concerned with the schools are, you know, may not be, you know, not all people in our, in our city want to, you know, that's the most important thing. They came here because they liked this, our smaller town. They don't want us to grow exponentially like Sun Prairie. We already know that we have problems with our services and can't, our budget can't afford another huge development at this point because we just don't make, get that money back to increase our police, our fire, our EMS, and our, you know, public work. So I guess with that, and, and I don't like being a bad neighbor. I mean, the Town of Dunn doesn't want this. I mean, this is, you know, even though if Dvorak already owns it, it's not going to go back to, maybe it will stay as farmland, but, you know, I can't, the Town of Dunn had a problem with our comprehensive plan, and all the communities did because they weren't really a part of that whole thing. I just, we're taking away land in their tax base. I mean, it's, it's not being a good neighbor. So I guess after just talking, I, at this point, I think we have enough growth going on. I don't, I don't think that we need this at this point. So I'm going to vote against it.
Alder Person Bartlet?
Yeah, just to respond to that, I guess. I've talked to a lot of my constituents, and I know in my district, the majority I've talked to do support this. And I don't, I don't think there's any guarantee we're going to hit the ten percent growth. I'm worried if we stop growth, we're going to end up back in the area where, I don't remember, the late nineties, early two thousands, when they made a decision to stop and put a moratorium on growth for a while. I think that really hurt the city. I think if we don't take advantage of these while we can, I think it's going to come back to bite us later on. There's no guarantee Kettle Park is going to afford. We don't know the Riverfront, how that's going to happen still. There's still a lot of work to be done on both of those. So I think we still need to work on that. As for the plan and the border agreement, I don't represent the Town of Dunn, so I'm going to represent my constituents and the city's interest over theirs. I know, I think they're going to be against any annexation we have, no matter what. And I understand that if I was one of them as well, I would be in the same boat. I would agree with them if I was on their side. But I'm going to represent my constituents and vote for it. Thanks.
Any other? Alder Person Borsma?
Yes, I'm going to support this. I raise it because I think when we have something that is controversial as a council, we should discuss it and not just have, like, planning, discuss it or whatever. I think we should actually do that. I have spoken to a number of people about this, too, and I think primarily the people I've spoken to are in favor of the annexation. But they're also, they're also people who live in the city, so they have, they have that interest in mind. I will, I will be supporting it, you know, with, just the fact that I think it's good that when we have these controversial things, we discuss them as a council rather than just sort of have a willy-nilly pass it because we have a, we have a planning department that votes for it.
Any other comments? Alder Person Riley?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I actually have a question. I don't know if anyone can answer it. Do we know what would become of this property were we not to annex this property to the city? Do we have any notion as to what, would it continue to be agricultural use, ad infinitum? Or does anyone have any ideas on that?
Certainly, the developers here, if you'd like to hear from them. You know, he is a developer. He's not a farmer, so...
I understand he doesn't intend to farm the property. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. We purchased this property about fifteen years ago, a little over fifteen years ago. And our intent right now is just to try to get an overall picture of what we could do with sanitary storm in the water mains and start to communicate with the city and their engineers and get an overall picture, the concept of what we can possibly do here. As far as going forward, until we actually get to a point of development, it'll stay as farmland and be farmed, to answer your question.
And again, I'm sorry, thank you. I guess my question wasn't, I don't know that it can be answered, is, should the council decide not to do this, will this, in all likelihood, remain farmland forever, pretty much? Or, you know, for the foreseeable future?
Well, it'll stay farmland, and at some point, we may bring it back.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Attorney Dragni?
I have a question. If the council does not annex the territory now, would you still move forward with the process of evaluating public services being provided to this property in the way that you said you're interested in doing?
Probably not for that portion because it just costs a lot of money with engineers and looking at the, the whole way the stormwater flows all the way through Virgin Lake and Paradise Pond, that's a concern. And we've started some pre-dialogue with the city and the engineers, and, and there's just a lot of big undertaking to get all this to flow properly and work correctly.
Alder Person Legaki?
Asking you to have a crystal ball right now, and if things were to go as you see today, when do you think development may begin and growth?
That's a tough question to answer, but I would say ten, fifteen, twenty years. It's not any short-term plan.
What is the soonest that, if everything aligned, what is the soonest you think that growth would come?
Ten years.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alder Person Borsma?
I know this is my third time at it.
Yes, it is.
How I, how I square this for myself when I think about this, I think there's, I think there's a number, there's three, three parties represented in this whole thing: Town of Dunn, city of Stoughton... Town of Dunn, city of Stoughton, and then the property owner. And I think the property owner should have some right to do with his land, or her land, what, what they think they should do with their land in terms of long-term planning because they are the owners of the property. So I think if we just look at the issue of Stoughton and then look at the issue of the interests of Dunn and leave out the property owner or the developer, who happens to be the property owner, I think then we're giving a disservice to a property owner. And so that's one of the primary reasons why I'm supporting this.
Any other questions or comments? And I guess my two cents worth. The, the tax base out there right now on rough farmland is just a few hundred dollars. It's not, wouldn't be a substantial loss for the township. I think what we're trying to do is, is to get some more development opportunities in the pipeline. So when the current ones that we're working on now are completed, we have something to follow it up with. And the other side of 51 going out toward B, the other side is annexed, and it would just be natural to have both sides annex together and do an overall plan for the entire area instead of trying to piecemeal it. So I think that's important. And another thing that is really important is when properties are annexed, it's, there's an application that's brought to the city. We're not out seeking annexation, developer, farmer, whoever comes to us to ask for it. We don't have to accept it, but really the benefit for us, especially this piece of land, this is the gateway to our city. And if it's annexed into the city, we really have more say and more control on how it's developed and what it looks like as people are approaching our community. And I think that's important. If we don't annex it and we leave that up to developer and the township, we don't know what we're going to get. At least this way, we do have a voice at the table and we're part of the process, of the approval process of how it's zoned, what goes in there, what's allowed, what's not allowed. And I think that's really important, important consideration for this body to think about as you vote on this. My understanding is we need a two-thirds approval in order for this to pass, just so everybody knows that. Any other questions or comments before we do our roll call vote?
All the person Caravelo.
I just wanted to say that I'm, I am aware that, you know, I don't represent Dunn. I represent Stoughton and my constituents and the best thing going forward for everybody in the city of Stoughton. And I think for, for a good part that that boundary agreement has been addressed and I understand that there's some natural boundaries there moving further west. So I'm still, you know, a little, a little conflicted on this one, but there's been a lot of good points and discussion and, and I understand Bob's wanting to look, you know, look forward five, ten, fifteen, twenty years as far as planning on this goes. So that's all I want to say.
Okay. Thank you. All the person Reeves.
I just would like to echo Mayor Swadley's sentiment that if, I mean, we're not going to, you know, prevent it from becoming developed at some point necessarily. And I'd like to have some say in what that development looks like or whomever's on council at the time. And I think that it is, you know, we're going to have a much better shot, you know, if we have, if we approve the annexation to the city, we can have a discussion and a vision about what that might look like and hopefully a conversation with a developer. So I would, I'll support this.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we'll take our roll call vote. Let us know when you're ready. Holly.
Boris.
Aye.
Caravelo.
No.
Doom.
Yes.
Eily.
Aye.
Hirsch.
No.
Jensen.
Aye.
Legaki.
Aye.
Mieski.
No.
Reeves.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Schumacher.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
That motion carries on a vote of nine to three.
Thank you. All right, and that takes us to item new business. Item number seven is R-190 of 2019. This one is coming from finance. All the person Schumacher.
All right. R-190, 2019, authorizing and directing the proper city official to enter into an agreement to continue participation in the Madison area municipal stormwater partnership. And I so moved.
Second.
That's a motion and a second by Hirsch.
Reeves.
Reeves, I'm sorry. I came here tonight. You two, I always get you two mixed up over there. All the person Schumacher.
All right, so this is a, if you looked in the packet, it's got a pretty large number of municipalities around that all contribute into this, I don't want to say, into this group. It's an informational and educational cooperative talking about stormwater and stormwater management. They do radio ads and print materials and mailers and all that sort of thing. And if you saw, we contribute about fifty-two hundred dollars would be in the first year of it, and then that escalates to about sixty-three hundred over the five years of this. And we've heard that it, it does, does pay out some, some dividends. We get some returns out of it from the educational piece.
Any questions or comments on this one, or do you want more information? Certainly Director Shield can fill in the blanks if you have any questions. All right, here are none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Thank you. Item number eight comes from finance, R-191.
R-191, 2019, approving a financial agreement between the state of Wisconsin and the city of Stoughton for costs for the construction of roundabouts on U.S. Highway 51 at Hole Silverado, State Highway 138, and Robey Road scheduled to be constructed. And I think that should be twenty.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one. Okay, that is the right date on there. I had a note of it otherwise. And I so moved.
Second. Second by all the person Jensen. All the person Schumacher.
This is, we don't have a large cost compared to what the state is picking up in this one to get three nice roundabouts at, at the places indicated in the resolution.
Any questions? All the person Bartlett.
Has there been any news on the rec center's request with the DOT to improve their access? I'm worried if we approve this, does this lock us into that design? Are they going to say the city approved this design and paid the money? Is it a done deal if we do this?
This is really about the dollar allocation. I don't know that it locks into the design, but certainly they've acknowledged receipt of our information and they indicated that we'd be getting response related to that request. But I have not heard any direction or any feedback from them on what that might entail.
I know we did have some discussion with the, with the new owner of the rec center there about, about the concerns that they had with that. And yeah, it's, it's a goofy little section there, so.
We certainly will follow up on that.
The DOT did receive your, your resolution that you took action on related to that.
Yep. I had all the person Legaki and somebody else over here. Caravelo after that.
Is it possible to tie this money? If we were to approve this, could we put a, a condition on it that, that says pending their response to that request? I would hate to put us into a hands-tied situation if we approve this tonight. And I don't know if I have enough knowledge on public law to even know if that's a good suggestion.
Go ahead.
Our contribution is outlined here as related to color concrete enhancements to the concrete appearance and utility adjustments within the district, within the, the project I don't know that that would be something we could do. This is an enumerated project that they'd be proceeding with, probably without us, without these enhancements in the event. This isn't a project that we've designed, they've designed, they've heard our testimony and have heard our comments, and they're taking that as part of the design consideration. But this is the opportunity for us to have some aesthetic improvements that we as a council voted on some time ago. This just allocates the cost for those requests.
So to follow up, this is sort of more like an oranges and apples thing then. This money is for the color and the apples is the condition of the rec center and if I understood you correctly.
I believe that to be true. I think they're separate.
Thank you. This is the Frosty.
All the person Caravelo.
I have actually found an answer to my very minimal question, so.
Okay.
Draw my request.
All right. Anybody else have any questions or thoughts about this one? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Next item, I believe, comes from finance as well.
Keeping it on a roll. R-192, 2019, authorizes an increase in operating hours for Stoughton Transit and to authorize the addendum to the 2018 shared ride taxi contract with Running, Inc. So moved.
Second.
Second by all the person Reeves. I heard it that time. All the person Schumacher.
The good part, or the good news out of this is that our, our new taxi arrives tomorrow. So says Jamin, right? After, after, we've had them plenty, so.
Yeah, take it for a test ride.
So then what, what this is doing is getting this additional taxi in, this is adding some, some additional hours into it so that you would get some, some better usage out of there. And then requests have been made to increase hours on that. This is a DOT contract and they, they govern what the rates are going to be, so we just agree to them. And with this, or it's a five-year agreement, and the state does pick up fifty-seven percent of the, the whole contract, and then we recoup the rest of it through the fares.
All the person Hirsch.
I see that the contract rate is thirty, forty-six. What was the rate last year? Do we know how much it's gone up? Is this the rate that the teenagers have to pay?
No, this is what the city pays per hour to Running, Inc., who runs the taxi service. The, the fares themselves to the riders is not going to change. The, so the hourly fee for the city last year was twenty-nine ninety-five. And the DOT does set this rate.
Okay, so we don't have anything to do with it.
Right, but the fares themselves will not increase.
Between three and four dollars a ride is, depending on if they're a senior citizen or if they're paying full price.
Okay. All right, thanks. Just like, whoa, that's, that's a bit.
Yeah, so basically, basically, we're trying to extend the hours because of the demand, I think. I mean, it's.
Oh, I think it's great.
They've already reached their quota a while ago, and we want to make sure they get paid for their extra effort. And we believe the additional fares that are being generated will cover at least our share of it, and the state will pick up the difference. So if, if it would exceed ten percent of the contract, we'd actually have to rebid it. But this is, you know, well below that. So if, if it for some reason spiked up to that point, then I think the shared ride would, would have some concerns about extending it because they wouldn't want to jeopardize having to rebid, basically. But this should cover us for a long time. And with the additional vehicle with the lift, I think that's going to be very well-received out in the community. All the person Hirsch.
I know they're also planning on getting grants. What happens to this contract if they're not successful in getting those grants? Does that fall on us or?
The grants for the vehicles or for the rides?
Well, it just says that they'll cover some of the extra hours and stuff through grants. So I'm just wondering if they are not successful in getting these grants, who's responsible for that?
The, the likelihood of us not getting the transit grant is pretty low. We've, I mean, we've had it for years. It's pretty well standard that we're going to get it. Depending on how they look at our application and the finances that we put in there, it could be a little bit less, it could be a little bit higher, but overall, between the fares and the grant dollars we will receive, it should be covered.
Okay. Thank you.
All the person Boris.
Over the last number of years, we've had some discussion about different kinds of transportation besides taxis, including bus service. And I've always been concerned about this, that we have, with, with a contract for only taxi service, if we would ever want to expand to do like a bus service instead of a taxi service or in addition to the taxi service, that we may have difficulties implementing that kind of thing. One of the things that we have, what I have a concern is that we have a number of people, I think, in Stoughton who would benefit from having a, a bus that would go from Stoughton to Madison and back again and that kind of thing. And I, and I, and I think with a long-term contract with a taxi service, specifically a taxi service, that it might, it might tie our hands. I'm not sure what to deal with that, how to deal with that issue, but at some point in the future, we, we may want to consider doing something alternative to the taxi service. I don't know what to do about that because I don't think it.
The share ride is mostly servicing the city of Stoughton proper, maybe a little bit outside the limits. The other type of transit would be similar to Sun Prairie. They do have a shared ride. In fact, they have the same vendor as we do. And they also have recently started a, a park-and-ride with a shared ride over to American Family area there. So I think we're probably looking at two different customers there. Local services for people, and then the potential bus service at some point would be more services that would be outside of Stoughton. So I think that's what the distinction would be, and that's what we'd have to factor in into any agreement we would put forth.
Just to follow up, our city is expanding outward. It's expanding into the, into the hinterland of Kettle Park West. You know, and those, these, these kind of things, I think, require us as a council to consider how we're doing things in terms of transportation. I think we have to look at that at some point. I'm not sure which committee would be looking at that issue, but I think transportation is, is something that we're going to have to deal with at some point in the future without just having a taxi service. I think we should, we should be looking at that in the future, I think, because I think we're, we're not, we're not actually serving our community very well if we don't start thinking about new and improved transportation services for, for our constituents.
And I would agree. And I would say, you know, we are having preliminary conversations with Dane County. And just last week, I met with the mayor of Monona and their city administrator and also the city administrator with McFarland. So we're really at the early stages, but we are engaging in those conversations because you're right, there is a huge need out there and it's growing. Any other questions?
I know this is a hot topic at Lea, I mean, at, at federal, state, and local levels. It's the, the first mile, last mile conversation about, they might have employment opportunities within cities and that, but, and they might have, you know, some sort of mass transit and that, but bus stops, buses don't bring you to your front door. That's, and that's where the first mile and the last mile come in. So it's certainly a, a hot topic.
Well, and there's also environmental concerns and advantages to having mass transit that certainly Stoughton Utilities is, is working with us to try to help identify opportunities, you know, basically to reduce the amount of emissions off the vehicles as well, so. Plus, you know, traffic on the Belt Line's not getting to be any less, so. And Phil is, and Rodney are representatives on the MPO, which are dealing with transportation issues, so we're also represented there. And I'm sure these types of topics come up all the time.
It's the topic of every meeting, basically, I think, trying to figure out how to get folks that are in Stoughton to where they want to be. And, you know, also, my thoughts are about how to move people that are here around in town and efficiently and, you know, with a mind towards, we have winter and seasons and things like that to contend with here, so. so, yeah, it's a lot of things to tackle.
I know at least several of the larger employers in Madison do run shuttle services for their employees back and forth from here up to Madison, UW, Epic, places like that.
Any more questions on the shared ride?
I have, does this, how will this impact the Stoughton Transit, like, actual daily operating hours, like their 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. weekday? Will it impact those hours?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I thought it was a, was it a weekend addition?
Yeah, the actual hours, so they'll be adding, let's see, 104 hours will be allocated to the weekend service and 265 hours to the weekday rush hour service. So they'll probably just add on either early in the morning and then later at night. And just to the mayor's point in terms of two different demands, just even today on a random Tuesday, they had 111 rides. I mean, that's kind of more than I would anticipate for a Stoughton Transit. So it, and we've seen an uptick too, so they are busy, and there is demand for this service.
All right. We have a motion on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. Next resolution also comes from finance.
We were busy. R 193 2019 authorizing and directing the proper city official to engage Baker Tilly for utilities audit services for the years ending 2019, 2020, 2021. So moved.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Jensen. Go ahead, Alder Person Schumacher.
One correction in the resolution header, and the fiscal impact 2019 amount should read 18,700, and the other two values are correct. This is, I don't have, I don't have any notes about this. Jamin, you want to run this one? I don't have a note about this one.
Yeah, so this is just kind of a formality. Baker Tilly's been doing the audits for the utilities for a number of years. We generally engage them on three-year terms. The overall 2019 price here is actually less than what we were charged for the 2018 audit, so they're staying pretty competitive with their rates. It's standard engagement letter verbiage, and again, we've been with Baker Tilly for decades at this point and have no complaints with them. They're a great firm, I mean, what can I say?
You're not biased, are you?
No, not at all. I did used to work.
He's an alumni, right? Full disclosure. Okay. Any other questions or comments on this one? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. R 194 is from finance. Go ahead, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, R 194 2019 authorizing and directing the proper city officials to utilize excess funds in the 2019 capital outlay budget, not to exceed $2,500 to cover deficiencies in the 2019 body camera replacement budget. So moved.
Second. Second by Jensen. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, I think I'm just going to turn this one over to Chief to address body cameras.
This actually isn't a deficiency, it's an opportunity. We've saved some money in our outlight funding from our radio programming and camera interface, and we'd like to utilize that to actually buy a head on the body worn cameras. We have an opportunity to buy eight cameras that would be matching devices for the current in-squad video that's used, so that we would eliminate the need for wearing two, a camera plus a microphone on the officers. And we just, with adding the funds together, we're just a little short, and about $2,500 will cover that.
Any questions for the chief? Here are none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. Thank you. R 195 is finance.
R 195 2019 authorizing and directing the proper city official to enter into a new medical director agreement between the City of Stoughton, Wisconsin, and Southern Wisconsin Emergency Associates. So moved.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, this one is kind of a formality contract. Parties aren't changing in this. Fiscal impact isn't changing. The last update on this language in the contract was done in 2006, and the wording is essentially the same, except it added in some language based on if the medical director retires, and that happened, so it was a good time to update such an agreement.
Alder Person Hirsch.
I guess I never even knew that we had a medical director. Where are they? Why haven't I ever seen them, heard them?
EMS services need a licensed physician to direct the actual EMS services, and that's what this contract is for, because the city doesn't have a licensed physician, so they have to contract it out.
And so every time they go out, they have to contact this person?
I don't think every time, but I think there are times that they're consulted. I think there is some, like, engagement practices, best practices, learning opportunities, things like that.
Okay.
Yep, and then Dr. Tripp is retiring after many years, so that's why we're here tonight with this.
Okay. The role of a medical director for EMS services largely in consultation and for review, and so it's a, it's sort of a supervisory and a safety in place so that there's medical responsibility and a natural line of consult.
Okay, great. First time I've seen this come up, that's why.
Me too. Just when you thought you seen it all, huh?
I know, it was like, what? When did we get a medical doctor?
Any other questions or comments on this one? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. R 196, last one for finance tonight.
R 195?
R 195, yeah. No, 96.
96.
Yep.
Then there is an error in the resolution header. That one's listed as 195.
Yeah.
Okay, so R 196 2019 authorizing and directing the proper city officials to amend the 2019 City of Stoughton operating budget. So moved.
Second.
Second by Haley. Okay. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, two things that happened in this one were budget transfers that were supposed to go between two TIF districts. We had it going to five. That one was restructured, so it went, it's going to go to eight now, but we've got to make a note of that. The other is kind of shifting around some monies in the EMS funds for equipment replacement and the trucks, so moving some from the truck to the equipment replacement. Did I get that right, Jamin?
That's correct, yes.
All right.
Your savings are 25,000?
Yeah, savings is 25,000. It's 40,000 earmarked for the truck, and then it's only 15,000 is being moved over to the equipment replacement fund, so just save, the net is 25,000.
Any questions or comments? Alder Person Riley.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that there's a grammatical error in this resolution, and the third whereas, I think it should read whereas an amendment to decrease funding, and then the words was made to the EMS truck fund. Otherwise, it's kind of disjointed, isn't it? Or am I misreading this? I think that the words was made should appear after the word funding in order to make that make sense, but maybe I'm misreading it. I don't think so, though. Jim, it's in Norwegian. Oh, it's Norwegian. Well, I'm sorry.
We'll clean that up.
I withdraw.
Any other questions or comments? Here are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Item 14 is a first reading from Public Works, ordinance 27.
Ordinance 27 of 2019 repealing and recreating section 58-6 and 58-8 and creating sections 58-12 and 58-13 of the City of Stoughton Municipal Code relating to public nuisances. And this is the first reading. Can definitely answer, I don't have all the answers. This Attorney Dragney has reviewed this in his law firm and had a memo with it in your packet. Director Public Works will be here for the second reading to discuss it, but it has to deal with better enforcement of our nuisance policies, and we were looking at this because of the noxious weeds and the tree issues, and I know, I think Attorney Dragney knows a little more about it than I do. If you'd like to comment on it or have any questions.
Well, I can add a little bit to the discussion. You know, one of the real areas of focus in this ordinance was how to deal with trees on private property and the circumstances under which the city or city staff would actually be able to evaluate those trees because they're on private property, so we have to be careful about how we go onto private property to conduct an investigation. And then the other challenge is to decide, under what circumstances should the city actually take action to deal with a tree on private property that might have a concern associated with it? And so I think where things ended, kind of have several different categories to think about. Where the city forester determines that there is a tree that is diseased in a way that could lead to the spread of disease on other trees in the city, then I think the ordinance is structured to indicate that's an area where it would be a public nuisance that the city could take action to deal with. Or where a tree's on private property, but it threatens the public safety. For example, it might fall on a street or in a public area where the public would be at risk, the city could, that would be a public nuisance where the city could take action. There was some discussion about whether the city should involve itself in dealing with trees that don't threaten public safety but might be of some concern to a private property owner. And as I understand it, the recommendation was to, you know, not to characterize that as a public nuisance, that the city would be responsible for addressing and to treat that as a private matter, which I think is certainly the approach that I see my clients taking, is to try not to turn those situations into public responsibilities to deal with. So the ordinance addresses those issues. We did make changes to the ordinance relating to nuisances and how they are to be addressed from a procedural standpoint to make sure that our process is consistent with the law. And I think that's kind of it. That's what I can tell you.
Alder Person Hirsch.
No, I think it's pretty good. I'm just concerned if you start coming down heavy on some private property about noxious weeds and wild growth, that the city itself and some of our public spaces has quite a few noxious weeds, so, you know, before we start, you know, handing out things, we need to get our own lands in order too, so, because it might not be a good perception if we're handing out fines or whatever for noxious weeds along our riverbed or along some of our other public areas. We have noxious weeds that we need to take care of those first. Just a comment, but, you know, before we start pointing fingers at somebody else, we better be pointing fingers at ourselves and taking care of it first.
Alder Person Bartlett.
Yeah, the Tree Commission and Public Works has been looking at that, and we're definitely not looking at coming down heavy handed on anybody, we're just trying to update our ordinances, make them clear and enforceable if we did come to that point, but you definitely have a good point, and we have plenty areas to look at of our own, so. Thanks.
Alder Person Borisman.
I know some families and elderly people who may have 10 ash trees on their property, and to take care of the 10 ash trees on their property would be lots of money, and that they couldn't afford it, and giving them a ticket is not going to do a whole lot of good sometimes. But I think that as long as the city can be cooperative, you know, if they assess a situation and are at least somewhat lenient with some people who may have some, real difficulty coming up with payment for taking care of, especially ash trees, because those are a public nuisance, but that could run into thousands and tens of thousands, even more in terms of, and, you know, when I was on Tree Commission, we talked about that going onto somebody's property and looking at a tree and then assessing it and then saying it has to come down, that the city is expecting in these situations that every one of these trees will be taken care of by that particular individual, and it just may be extremely difficult to be able to enforce a policy like this unless we have some leniency for people who simply cannot afford to do it. I don't know how to deal with it completely, but it's a matter of some concern because some of these properties have a lot of ash trees on that have not been taken care of at this point.
Alder Person Bartlett.
Yes, yeah, and I'm on the Tree Commission, I replaced you this year, of course, and we have talked about that a lot, and you'll see, this only deals with those nuisance trees that may fall upon a sidewalk, street, or public property, because there are thousands of ash trees out there on the private land, and we have no intention of going out there and ticketing all of those and going after them. If it's not an issue on the public, on their private land, we're not going to be able to deal with a lot of that.
Well, there is a, yeah, there is a little bit more to the, there's another section of the ordinance that deals with trees that are diseased, or, let me find this, diseased, infested, or dangerous trees, or other plantings, and the failure to property treat or control the same, which is likely to cause the spread of disease or infestation or endanger persons because of the deteriorated condition, is hereby declared to be a public nuisance. And I think the issue there is that, and I haven't been at the committee meetings where this has been discussed, but I think the city forester's going to have to work with you all to make decisions about how to deal with Emerald Ashbore. And is that going to be something where the policy decision is going to be, you know, we're just going to let that happen because there's no stopping it? Or is the policy decision going to be, no, we're going to be really aggressive and try and treat every ash tree in the city and hold it off? And, I mean, this ordinance would give you the ability, if the policy decision is made, that's an infestation that we want to fight. It would give you a tool to fight it, but I think you're going to have to make a decision about what approach the city wants to take on that. And I'm not sure how much discussion there's been about specifically that particular issue. I think we'd need your forester and your Public Works director here to really have that conversation.
Yeah, I think most of the conversation is, when it occurs, it's somebody brings something to our attention, hey, there's a tree that I think's going to fall down, and, you know, it might, you know, land on the sidewalk or fall on my car that's parked there or even in somebody's yard. Certainly, if it's in somebody's yard, that's going to be between the homeowners to figure that out, but if it's something that's brought to our attention and we go out and look at it and say, yeah, it could fall on the sidewalk, and if somebody's out there, they could get hurt, then we want to at least be able to notify the owner and hopefully they would make the arrangements to take care of it. I mean, that would be our approach. We're not out looking to, you know, to penalize people. We want to just let them be aware that there is a concern, and we'd like them to be able to address it. Certainly, if they don't, and we think that it's a serious situation, we have the ability to go further, but that's not really our first choice.
Yeah, on ash trees, we've almost given up on being able to control that spread of disease, except for those people who have enough money to treat those ash trees that potentially are going to be infested pretty quickly. Once they're infested, it's kind of impossible to stop, and so I just wanted to clarify that because, you know, if we would require some of these people to take care of all their trees, if that's, if we would consider it kind of noxious, we're going to have some, we're going to have some terrible problems with.
And we know firsthand, we had many of our own that we had to pay to have removed, and we had to come up with additional resources to do that. You know, we're in a better position than individuals are often, but certainly, you know, we felt the financial pain in doing that ourselves, so we're certainly sensitive to that.
Well, I'm a Realtor, and just looking at ash trees on a property can really reduce the value of that property, especially if we had an ordinance that said they've got to all be come down. So I raise it as a concern for people who potentially could not financially afford to remove their ash trees if we would consider them to be noxious.
Thank you. So this is the first reading. Do you have another? Do you have another question?
I just wanted one, one other thing. From trees, the, the dangerous trees that could fall on sidewalks, or roadways, or other public areas, does that also address, like, utility easements? I mean, if we have restrictions on putting fences and/or structures of any sort on those, do we have anything that would talk about the trees laying on the easement? Yes, they're in a private property, sort of, or it looks like that, but.
So, a, a public property could potentially encompass an easement area, and I think the judgment that your, your forester would be making is whether there's a risk. You know, is, is, is that public area, easement area, maybe it's a power line even? You know, is there a risk to public property, people on public property? So, I think it, that, that definitely would be an area that could be, could be considered public property.
I just think things like this would be of interest to either the utility companies or insurance companies even, as to whether this is going to cause damage in some way or another.
Go ahead.
And I guess the Tree Commission's kind of thought of that, from my understanding, is that, yeah, it's not really a public thoroughfare, that they're not going to have a lot of public there on a private easement. If there is an issue with the utility line or something like that, it's up to the utility to identify it and trim those back as part of their easement, and what's allowed by their easement. So, the Tree Commission isn't pushing for going in and doing this work on those easements, but it could possibly come up with the forester or Public Works director at some point. So, I guess it would give us the ability to, if we needed to, but we weren't looking at going in that direction.
Okay.
So, this will be back in the meeting in January. If you have anything between now and then, you can send them to either Matt, he's the Chair of Public Works, or send them to Brett, Public Works Director, and we'll, we'll try to answer your questions. And Brett will be at the next meeting. All the person Boris.
Just one other idea is, is maybe to, at some point, have our forester, you know, if we have additional questions about that, is have our forester come to council and answer some questions that we may have related to what his recommendations might be.
Okay. Thank you. All the person Jensen. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Have a good night.
Thank you.